Select Board meeting of August 16th at 6:07 PM. And we are on. I will remind everyone that this is, meeting is being recorded and broadcast on SLTV. All right. I don't know if I said that right.
Oh, there you go.
Can you, can I get there? I just had to make sure I kept pointing to the same sign on the wall. All right, roll call vote. Mr. Allison. Ms. Turner.
Here.
Mr. Kerrigan. Here, we are all here. Ms. Hodges is here, everyone's here, it's so much fun.
And just, I appoint for the minutes, is this as a special meeting because it's a Tuesday?
Okay.
Okay.
It's a special meeting because it's a Tuesday.
Just for the minutes, yeah.
So, all right. Before we have the approval of minutes and then we have a scheduled appearance from both our police chief and our fire chief, I just want to address a couple of items and then we'll go into more depth later in the meeting. I want to start with a few thank yous. I was able to come yesterday, I guess it was, to a meeting of the department heads here in town who were working diligently as they always do on behalf of the town. And I had an opportunity to say thank you to them, but I wanted to do so again in this public forum. And to thank them for the incredible work that they and the people who work with them do. And I want to extend that thanks to all the volunteers who support the town, either in elected, appointed, or just volunteer positions. These are not easy tasks, but certainly the folks who we entrust on a day-to-day basis to run our towns, patrol our streets, keep our homes and our bodies safe through fire and EMS, roads and all that deserve our thanks and appreciation. They are not easy jobs by any stretch of the imagination. Oftentimes, resources are short, which means replacements of people in other jobs are difficult to do. But I just wanted them to know yesterday and I want you all to know now how grateful I am and I know the town is and dare I say, the rest of the select board I know would join me in thanking those town officials. So, I wanted to start by that, by thanking the town staff and the volunteers who do so much for this community that we all call home. Secondly, I want to thank three folks who have attended their resignation, which we'll talk about later. But Roy Marbido, Carol Jackson, and Pete Kristoff, who have served our town in various capacities, most recently on the planning board and other capacities for many years. I'm grateful to them for their service, as I know, you know, most of the town is very appreciative for their service and their sacrifice. And I will say, you know, there are times when we don't all agree on issues, but we do agree that service is important to our community. That's how we help shape the community that we live in. And so I want them to know I'm incredibly grateful to them. I've had more of a relationship with Roy as my chair counterpart on the planning board, but I have respect for anybody who's willing to sacrifice of their time and energy. And along with that, I would also thank family members of those who are willing to volunteer and step up. It is not easy on those of us who put our names on a ballot or decide to volunteer and get appointed to something, but it's really not easy on those who are at home when you come back from a meeting or have to deal with the push and pull that comes with service in your community. So, I just think, starting from a place of gratitude today, I think is very important to me. And then finally, the last bit of thanks I want to offer before we get into some of these details is, many of you may have seen on Facebook or in other news sources, although calling Facebook a news source seems odd, but you may have seen it out there in the world, that after 35 years of faithful service, and I call it service to our communities, Jan Gottman will no longer be at the Clinton Item, which is a real shame. And this is a result of downsizing, I would understand, from Gannett News or what have you. But Jan has lived and breathed the communities that the Clinton Item covers for decades. And we wouldn't be, I know I learned a lot from her when I was on the finance committee and the select board. When I was a younger man, I've learned even a lot from her in the last few months. I'll speak for my family. A lot of my family had worked at Colter Press and over the years, my brother was a colleague of Jan's for many years at the Item. Jan is one of the most talented, hardworking, committed, and dedicated servants to the truth and to bringing out the news in our community that I've ever, or in any community that I've ever seen. And I want to make sure we take a moment on that because getting that sort of unvarnished news is really important. And getting a news organization like the Item, as small as it was, and I was, when I was a kid, it was the Clinton Daily Item, and it would come in the afternoon with the evening Gazette. Getting that unvarnished local sense of news is really, really important. And so I'd say to whoever made the terrible decisions that they made, I would hope that they reverse it. But whatever we can do as a community to create a pathway for that access to real news about what's going on in our communities, I think we should. Jan has been a pillar in this community and I know will remain so. Her husband Ken has served along her side for decades as well. We're represented by great folks, Sarah Arnold, who covers our meetings and many other meetings. The Item has been home to many people for 126 years and my hope is that it remains covering the town of Lancaster and the other communities. But I wanted to call out Jan in specific for her real sacrifice for our community. She has worked very, very hard to do yeoman's work over the last 35 years and she deserves our praise and our thanks. So, with that, I do want to go over, I guess we can do this stuff and I want to go over your report, yes? No, we're going to roll into that next, I was going to do this other stuff. Now, with that, we will go all into the agenda as laid out. So we have, next item is approval of minutes.
I'll offer a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of Monday, August 1st, 2022.
It's been moved and seconded, is there any debate or discussion on that?
I have one minor change, which I can actually hand to if you want, Kate, so you can give it to Kathy. It's under council and aging membership, there's just, in reviewing the, I find out there was just a different name mentioned rather than Frank McGory, he was also mentioned, but...
So are you hoping to amend your motion to amend that?
Yes, so I'll amend the motion to say, to the record, say the reflected, Joe Santangelo was discussed as being on the board, but, and then it said Frank McGory is not a current member, it was just transposed people.
So...
If you can read my, if you can read my writing.
Joe Santangelo, yeah. So, I understand, if I'm hearing you correctly, we have a motion on the table, which we can table.
No, just to approve it as amended?
But the motion was to approve the minutes, not as amended.
Okay, well, I would offer an amendment, Jason, please.
Yes, Jason.
So, I would ask that with the opportunity to hear you request and maybe just bring it back to another meeting. I mean, it sounds like it's kind of significant if it's...
So, yeah, no, so I will say, I believe it's a, there was a transcription confluence and I don't think it's, it was when we were having that discussion of, oh, who might still be on the, if I'm interpreting this right, who might still be on the council and aging, which I know Kate has an update for us on later. We discussed a number of names and in the minutes it reflected that...
Frank twice, one of them should be Joe.
Frank twice and one of, and one of the references, Frank McGory should be to Joe Santangelo.
So my motion is to amend it, I have no problem with holding that, but I would offer, it's moved, seconded.
I'll second the amendment.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Second the amendment?
Yeah.
Is there any further discussion on the amendment and the motion?
Yeah, so Kate, do you have any issues with as amended there?
Sorry, my chicken scratch was just from my... No, that's fine, so you're saying Frank should be...
Joe Santangelo.
Joe, okay. Joe, she's actually a female, J.O. Okay, yep, A-N-G-E-L-O, no, no issues, thank you, Jason.
Okay, all right. Here, no further discussion, all in favor, Mr. Allison?
Aye.
Ms. Turner?
Aye.
Mr. Kerrigan, aye, 3-0-0. Approval of minutes is done. And now, we have a scheduled appearance. And the scheduled appearance is for our police chief Everett Moody and our fire chief Michael Hanson to give us some updates to this board and through us, the community, on the LIV Golf Invitational, scheduled to begin Friday, September 2nd and run through Sunday, September 4th. So I yield the floor, I would just recommend, I don't know from a volume perspective if people can hear you from where you are, but you may need to stand closer.
We can do a sound check, would Jason?
Can you hear me from here?
Okay, fantastic. Oh, a little bit.
I'll get a little closer. First of all, thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight and speaking with town administrator Kate Hodges about the upcoming event she suggested. And the fire chief and I agreed that the board and our community deserves some insight on the information, on the upcoming event being held the first week of September. The Par Five Group and LIV Golf Invitational Series will conduct its fourth tournament at the International Golf Course in Bolton from September 2nd to the 4th. Although the event is being hosted by a Bolton-based, the Bolton-based International, six of the holes of play are located either entirely or partially in Lancaster. All of the spectator parking for the event will be hosted at the Lancaster Fairgrounds here at Southern Bridge Road. Parking has been limited to 5,500 spectators. We anticipate 2,000 to 2,300 cars arriving as early as 9:00 AM and departing as late as 10:00 PM over the three days of play. This would be comparable to a Sunday or a Friday at the Bolton Fair, not as hectic as this Saturday would be. We do expect some traffic delays, but with the new year traffic, it should be manageable with the help of the Massachusetts State Police. Buses will be used to transport spectators back and forth to the event. Security measures taking place here in Lancaster consist of private security with Juan metal detectors, state police K-9 surveillance cameras, and onsite police presence. The bus routes will have the Massachusetts State Police details at intersections along the route to keep traffic moving and minimize delays. And the route will follow 117 to Route 110, Old Common Road into Bolton. And then they will re-enter Lancaster coming in from the Clinton side on Lancaster Road, crossing Bolton Station Road, Old Common, Route 110, 117. We have suggested, and I believe they will accommodate adding no parking signs, at least on the side of the roads, restrictions just because of the size of the buses.
That's a sign similar to Bolton Fair.
Correct. We do anticipate some protests and demonstrations. In preparation, we've established a free speech zone located on the fairgrounds across from the general admission and shuttle pickup will allow and encourage peaceful protests for those willing to participate. For those of you that don't know, the nature of the protests are fueled by the LIV Golf funding by Saudi Arabia's Public Investment Fund. There's some controversy over the tournament's connection with the Saudi government's civil rights record and connection to 9/11 events. So with all of that in mind, there's been a lot of pre-planning measures taken into consideration. The fire chief and I have attended various public meetings, intel reviews, walkthroughs with all of our public safety partners. These meetings are continuing.
Stand closer or I speak up?
While we work up to and through the event. And in preparation for the event, we have created an emergency action guide. This includes a step-by-step process for every foreseen circumstance we come across with our... I will prepare and provide a copy for the board once that's finalized, so that you have it and you know exactly what to expect. We would encourage any other residents to reach out with any questions, call us at the police department. Obviously, if it's a question directly before public safety or the fire and EMS, reach out to chief Michael Hanson. We'll do the best that we can to answer those questions, if we don't have them, we will find them.
And I will only ask this on behalf of Sarah, who, Sarah Arnold, who just asked me to have you speak up, if you'd be willing to share your statement that you read to her, to Sarah, so she has, she did not miss out on what you, on what you said.
If anyone would like a copy, I would be happy to email it to them. They can reach me at elmoody@lancasterma.net or on the town's website.
Chief Hanson, do you have anything to add?
Don't, Everett, Chief Moody has actually covered it all. We've been working with the Bolton Fire Chief and the police department, pretty much two to three times a week we're meeting with EOPS and everyone, but we're also...
Just EOPS is the Executive Office of Public Safety.
Sorry, for people that don't know. We're also looking at both of our communities as a whole, there's a lot more going on than just a golf tournament. We have two soccer tournaments that weekend, Kimball's Car Show. There's another golf tournament in stow for FC Stars on Saturday, so we're looking at a whole... We are staffed at LIV's expense, so the fire station will be staffed with an ambulance and the engine. Plus, we are going to have personnel on the course during the tournament.
So I will say the one, and then I'll yield to my colleagues if they have any questions. The one question I've received the most, I have been able to answer because of stuff I've done in my career related to free speech zones and making sure that they have access to folks. And the question's always, why would you have the demonstration zone at the parking lot and not at the golf tournament? And the answer to anyone with that question is very clearly, because there were, many free speech zones have been established by federal cases, I know because one was around the 2000 Democratic National Convention that required a standard that we've had to live up to for the last 20-something years. But it needs to be in sight and sound of those attending. And frankly, the best way to get in front of the sight and sound, or within the sight and sound of those attending an event such as this is to go where they're parking their cars, because they have to drive by you when they park their car and drive by you when they're on the bus, rather than trying to jam up by the golf tournament, so, or golf club. So anybody who has that question, I hope that is satisfied, that question. I will say, I was, I am not thrilled that this tournament is taking place. I understand there's not much we can do about it. You both and your teams have done expert jobs at making sure that Lancaster's voice is heard at the table. I know Kate has reached out to the organizers to do the same, to try to get them to focus a little bit more on the impact that we're having here in Lancaster. But, you know, the circumstance of the circumstance, I think you guys are, you both are doing the best possible to protect the people of Lancaster and keep our, keep us informed and keep our streets as clear as humanly possible.
I think it's a good point to bring up, we discussed it today in our meeting, that we're going to be sending out one of the code red messages, because residents have said that they have bought tickets to attend and they plan on parking and walking. Everything has to go through the fairgrounds. Once you enter the tent there, that is the entrance to the event. Ballville Road will be closed, no one will be allowed to get down.
Are they getting magged there at the site, did you say that?
Yeah, they're getting their credentials and everything there.
The buses will all be clean, like, are there officers on the buses or are they just...
But once they go through the tent, they're officially in the event. They get on the bus and the bus does not stop until it gets to the International. So Ballville Road will be closed only to residents that live on that road and they have special parking addresses. So, no walk-in, traffic will be allowed.
And if they heard, like...
So, between Lancaster and Bolton, we're going to send out a code red so people know they can't walk or ride their bikes to the golf course to watch the event. That way, people aren't parking, like Everett said, they're going to mark the roads, no parking. And I believe we can give a little bit of this information, just so people aren't worried. There will be one fixed wing aircraft, there's going to be a parachuter every day that I guess has got a parachute in, and that's the start of the tournament each morning.
Ah, okay.
So, there'll be one parachuter with the fixed wing aircraft, so...
Community, if you see a parachuter over by the IGC, it's part of the plan.
I guess that's how they started, so.
Okay.
So there'll be one aircraft and one parachuter each day of the event. And I think the big part was entertainment, they had live entertainment, usually a national act, but they downplayed that because of cost, it was a DJ, so they don't expect the crowd to be as big at the end like they normally have. Hopefully, it'll go smoothly, it'll be...
What time do we expect the, I'm assuming buses will run all day, but there's got to be a big volume at the beginning and toward the end. Can you give us a sense of those windows of time?
The tournament itself is one...
They're doing a shotgun?
Shotgun tournament.
Right, which I...
One to five?
One thing I agree with with the LIV Golf situation is the shotgun start. Although it's hard to follow the leader, because you're watching...
They've held it the last three tournaments to that time, which has been, was actually four hours and a half hours. So they have a thing called Fan Village at the end, where they have music, live entertainment. And because they don't have any big acts, they're guessing, what was it, like 7:30, 8 o'clock, they'll be clearing out the golf course.
But how early are they letting people into the golf course?
So the major impact for us, the gates will open at 9 for parking. We'll see most of the people between 10 and noon time arriving, getting on buses, being shuttled over. Then we'll have roughly four hours of what we consider downtime while the active play is going on. And then it will start up somewhere, obviously, and if it's just in pursuit of golf, they're going to leave right away. People that stick around for the acts will be there as late as 8 o'clock and we'll see them coming back to town as late as 9 o'clock.
Mr. Allison, do you have any questions?
I do, can you...
May? Yes, we can.
Yeah, actually, I don't have any questions, but I do have a comment and it's a sincere comment and it's my fear for the future of Lancaster. I believe the situation is a microcosm of everything that we, the residents, and the town administration are dealing with. Here's a situation where neighboring town is having a benefit, you know, something that benefits them and their folks, and we, Lancaster, for the most part, weaken that by traffic and not re-ending the benefits of this situation. And I worry about that. And I'm worried that we need to pay attention in these situations and we need to care about, you know, what we're doing to making sure that the future of Lancaster is secure. So I, I know that's very tangential and that's not really my point, but I am sincere in saying, when I read about this event and I read about everything that was going on, I immediately went to, you know, why are we playing backseat to a situation and getting all of the impact and really not reaping a lot of the benefits? As Chief Hanson described, there's a lot of risk here and we will be spread thin. And, you know, I just ask myself, is that fair at Lancaster? And I don't need to go on a diatribe here, I think everyone gets my point. But I'm sincere in saying that this is my fear, that this type of stuff will continue and we will just be run thin about any benefits of these types of activities. And I'll hang up and for a back, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Turner?
Yes, thank you for going with us and, yeah, I'm sure they like that. If I saw a parachuter, actually, I would have thought Devens was practicing again, but...
You would, you would all day, it's true.
Been around that long. So, in sort of, it's something that I was going, playing off of what Jason was talking about, but the other thing is that when I was first made aware of this a little while ago, you, public safety and the, and fire became involved and I applaud that. And I wish that the tournament, LIV, had contacted us earlier. But I think that one of the things we do, and I will say, thank you, Kate Roden, what I thought was an excellent letter to the organizers of LIV, making our position crystal clear that, as Jason said, that we should, our impact should be better mitigated and compensated. Bolton, my understanding, has negotiated a nice compensation package for themselves. And I hope that in the future, with proactive work, that we can, we can also reap those benefits. That said, we've talked about this before with events, whether it be Kalon or Bolton Fairs or Soccer Fields. We have talked prior to Kate, prior to Steve, and we have that lamb her.
The good old days.
Yes, the good old days, about events, because we're rapidly becoming a place where, for better or for worse, where events come. It's nice that people come to our town, but there is an impact. And places such as Brimfield, which I know Steve and I like to visit, the town does benefit, Brimfield itself benefits from a series of fees that the vendors pay as well as say, support for public safety and the events. So, I think that's something that, if we've learned anything, it's getting out in front of events like this and trying to understand that when we have lemons, you know, we need to make lemonade, but we need this to be fundraising, because it does inconvenience people. And I'm proud, I'm happy that the fair had such a great weekend, it was a picture-perfect weekend. But there's other businesses along 117 and other tangential roads that we need to look out for too, so we need to do that. The other thing is, in regard to what you were talking about with protest areas, I think it's important to have those and allow them, they sound like they're well-placed. There is a social component to this event. We don't have anything in place, so we can't talk as a town about what's acceptable or not right now. If the Klan wanted to come rally here, I guess you could, you would, we would have to let them do so. So we have a government study committee, which I hope we touch on later, meeting coming up, but the, perhaps that's something that we need to look at. Some towns have clauses and discussions about what they, you know, their thoughts on that. So that's ethereal, but I think it's something that this brings up, that we need to, need to talk about. And I guess, once again, thank you to both, to you and your departments and to Kate for getting that letter out and hopefully, we will be more ahead of it next time. Luckily, it's Labor Day weekend, right? That's...
Yeah.
Everybody will be avoiding 117 and it's not during the work on 117.
Correct, it's, school is closed Friday, so...
How schools, that's good.
School is closed that Friday, so that will help with traffic as well.
And there's a possibility that the construction crew might have Friday off. They're still looking into that with Mass DOT, so there may be no road construction, so, that day. Hopefully.
They should compensate for it though, too, you know, that's the government's...
They'll probably compensate the Commonwealth, no, that's exactly.
Well, yes.
The compensation won't not come our way. So, I want to yield to Kate, if you have any comments, and then, but I just, before I do that, there's one point I want to level set and expectation set about your comment about the Klan coming to rally. I mean, I've spent a lot of my career dealing with these issues, short of permitting everything, you have to, there's First Amendment, and so they have to be allowed in, so... When we do have a government study, I don't want us to think that it's going to solve all the problems, but we have to be very particular about permits that we're willing to give and how long they can go for and things.
Yeah.
But we, sadly, when they're, the First Amendment zones are there, you have to let everybody in or you're really not adhering to the First Amendment. As long as they adhere to public safety and they are respectful, et cetera, but...
So it's just a discussion we have to have, because right now, it's wide open.
Right, but this would, we, there's nothing the town could have done short of changed the permit at the fairgrounds to have changed it.
Correct.
And I hope that, we've watched what's happened, they were in Portland and New Jersey and both sites had three to four protesters show up.
Demonstrations.
Demonstrations. We're hoping that'll be the same here in Lancaster.
Although we welcome any demonstrators who'd like to come. Do you have anything?
I received a phone call from the gentleman who I addressed my letter to for maybe around 5 o'clock today. And he is willing to come in front of the board. He was very adamant that the town of Bolton was not receiving a financial benefit from this, but that many groups, civic, cultural, and nonprofit groups that are stationed in Bolton are receiving some donations and that he also was working with the Parkins, or what do they now?
RFK.
RFK. And I had asked if he could send some documentation surrounding that and he agreed to do that. So, I will forward that to the board and we'll see, because we're getting some conflicting stories on who's getting a financial benefit.
All right. Thank you. Thank you both. All right, we are going to have to find a way to deal with the volume issue because according to some folks online, they couldn't hear a word that either one of you said. And you're not soft-spoken gentlemen, although you are.
I heard it.
You heard that? Okay.
Yeah, I think it's in the, I don't know.
Well, it's someone online.
I can shut the air conditioner off.
It'll make the meeting go by quicker. It's fine. It's fine by me. All right. Now, we... Right? We don't have air conditioning in our house, it's nice, exactly. All right, boards, committees, and department reports, there are none. We are now in public comment period. Reminder to folks that, raise your hand if you want to comment on something. We are going to discuss the planning board resignations and measures in the future, so if you are... if you are speaking about that, we can certainly do another public comment period after we give you more information about how we're conveying, how we're dealing with the planning board resignations.
Mr. Chairman, may I suggest for people that are here who wish to comment, that we maybe bring a chair up to the owl, just so people can hear?
Well, Rob is already up because he's well aware that he has to come closer to the owl in order to speak. But before, before anyone's recognized, although you will be recognized because you know the trick, because you're in the room, you'll get recognized first, I just want to remind folks that we are respectful in our public comment, that we are, we won't tolerate aggressive talk, we won't tolerate attacking any individual organization. We want this to be a fruitful exchange of comments and we also want this to give everybody an opportunity to express their concern if they have one or comment if they have one. Therefore, repetitive comments over and over won't be allowed either, so we'd like to get as many folks in as possible, but if you're saying something that's already been said, there's no need to say it. So, Mr. Rob Zidek, so step right up. And I would ask Sarah, if you're still there, let us know if you can hear Rob when he speaks.
Okay.
And again, four minutes, just do your darndest.
Rob Zidek, one of three Kaliba. The reason I present this report is to make it abundantly and irrefutably clear the substantial opportunities that all parties today possess and the considerable risk that these same parties avoided as a consequence of keeping the two zoning articles out of the last May's annual town meeting. I may only be able to get to one of them. Last week, I had a very productive telephone conversation with Mr. Bill Raelt of Massachusetts Department of Housing and Community Development, the HCD, on the topic of the smart growth overlay district zoning process. This was not my first communication with Mr. Raelt, in fact, it was my 12th, looked at my records, including one December 1st where we spoke for an hour. What I was trying to do is find out what is the right process for getting the 40B underway. As Mr. Raelt expressed to me last December, reemphasized last week, for the successful establishment of an SGOD, the order of events is absolutely critical to the success of that project. The sequence is as follows, and I'm going to go as fast as I can. Establish a healthy rapport between the town and DHD, which we have. Prepare the zoning bylaws, maps, worksheets, et cetera, for the preliminary determination of eligibility, which we did. Conduct a select board public hearing to review the PDE application, which we did on January 19th. Update the application zoning bylaws, et cetera, as a result of the hearing, which we did. Submit the PDE application, including all attachments, which we did on February 8th. Work with DHD to update the zoning bylaw stuff needed for approval. We see from DHD a PDE approval response, including conditions, financial incentive requirements, final updates to the SGOD zoning laws, which happened on May 27th, letter to Ms. Hodges there. Conduct a planning board public hearing to review and assess the DHD approval and financial incentive conditions, final versions of the bylaws, and public comments, which we did on June 8th. And the next step is, of course, to conduct the town meeting to vote on the zoning bylaw. When I asked last December, again, last week, for mass affirmation about the notion of conducting the town meeting before PDE approval and before final SGOD zoning bylaws were negotiated, Mr. Raelt advised me that this reverse chronology may be technically legal, but DHD deems it very unwise to do so because of the potentially high risks. He remembered only three out of probably hundreds occasions when a municipality did this. For one of them, the very risk about which he warned happened. The municipality had to conduct yet another town meeting to change the zoning bylaw again. Moreover, DHD toughened their conditions for project approval for that town and made it much tougher to achieve its financial incentives. In addition to the sound advice directly from Mr. Raelt, write in the letter to Ms. Hodges on page four, we read pursuant to 7060 CMR, et cetera, issues, this letter of conditional eligibility with the following additional standard conditions, unless subsequently otherwise approved in writing by DHD, the town adopts the smart growth zoning as enclosed and herein preliminary determined to be conditionally eligible. This condition clearly directs us to adopt the SOGD via town meeting vote with Attorney General approval after receipt of this letter and all zoning bylaws.
Sorry, I've got about 30 seconds.
And, well, good, because I'm to my handwritten part and I can't read it. I mean, considering this and the other things, like the memorandums of agreements weren't done, despite all of our impatience, we did the right thing and I'd like to see us do the right thing from now on. Thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate that. And this may be an apt time just to point out, we, there was a hearing scheduled for tomorrow evening. Obviously, today's resignations of planning board members made that difficult to conduct or impossible to conduct, but I just want to point out, it was canceled prior to the resignations, it was a clerical error that is easily made and we are in the process, as you'll hear later in the meeting, about rescheduling and dealing with all those things, so just wanted to point that out. Thank you, Rob, appreciate it. I see Kara. You gotta unmute yourself.
Thank you.
There you go, hi.
So Kara's here for 350 Bull Hill Road. I'd like to thank the planning board members, Roy and Carol and Keith, from my heart for looking after the neighborhoods and the environment and their work. It matters and thank you. That's it.
You win the award for 17-second public comment, Kara, well done. Raise your hand anytime you'd like, but thank you, that's very, that's very, and I'm sure, I'm sure they appreciate it and I appreciate you offering those thanks. Thank you. George France.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was unable to hear clearly a lot of the discussion that went on regarding the LIV tournament in Bolton, so if I repeat something that you've already discussed, please accept my apology.
Will do. And the chiefs are still here, so if you have any question for clarification, they can answer.
Right, right. I'm assuming that our involvement there is primarily through mutual assistance and obviously, public safety is paramount, so, you know, having our folks involved to work with the Bolton crew to make sure that everything is copacetic is the best thing to do. However, this LIV tournament group has an extremely unsavory reputation. I mean, they're funded by and vended by the Saudi royal family and I think we all know, you know, what those guys are about. I'm anticipating that there will be probably a lot of demonstrators, so I'm hoping that there will be a safe and secure place for demonstrators to show signs and whatnot and hopefully everything will be peaceful.
George, on that point, George, on that point, I'll pause your timer so you don't lose time. I just want to, there is a demonstration zone at the Lancaster fairgrounds, so folks can go there and demonstrate there and that way they get folks when they park their car and get on the buses and head to the event, but that's, there's a designated area already set aside for the demonstration.
Yeah, what, three miles away from the site?
Oh my God, you're literally feeding...
I understand.
Hold on a second, George, you fed into, because you fed into exactly the question I said to these folks I was getting the most. I've done national special security events, almost a half dozen of them. The rule that usually a federal judge will do is, within sight and sound of the people going to the event, there's no way demonstrators could be tolerated at the golf club and actually see most of the people attending. This actually maximizes the demonstrators' opportunity to at least be heard and seen by everybody who is going through that checkpoint, which is the only way any spectator of the golf tournament, correct me if I'm wrong, is going to be able to get on site. So it really is, look, I am, I, it pains me to think that while I sit in this chair, the Saudi government is running a golf tournament in the town next to us and their parking cars in Lancaster, it pains me because of their track record. It's not even a track record on civil rights, they ignore civil rights. And so it pains me to think this is happening, but I promise you, as someone who's done a lot of this for demonstrations, the best place for the demonstrators would be right there at the fairgrounds because they'll have the biggest access to those attending the event. Sorry, now I yield back, you still have two and a half minutes.
Yeah, thank you, Steve. What I've read from previous tournaments is that many, if not most, of the top-line golfers have declined to participate. It's, you know, money brings people forth and so it seems that they're offering extreme recompense for those who do register to play. Anyway, I know we'll do the best we can and hats off to the chiefs for taking care of public safety first.
Thanks.
I know that we're going to get into the planning board issues later and I will hold most of my comments, I'll only say I'm extremely disturbed by the, by the high level of toxicity that exists in Lancaster. It seems like, you know, no volunteer goes unpunished. This is, you know, we've got to do something different. This is wrecking our form of government and making it unpalatable for anybody to be involved in town vote. That's all for now, thank you.
Thank you very much, George. Seeing no more hands, that will be the end of public comment period. We will offer folks, George, you're first in line since you've virtually raised your hand to comment on planning board stuff, we'll offer folks an opportunity to comment, although briefly, when that time comes. All right, now, public comment period is over, town administrator report shall commence.
Okay, so I wanted to provide some recruitment updates. So we have posted, or we did post, the Health and Human Services Director position. We received 36 applications for that position, which I think is a very healthy amount. First interviews were conducted last week and the week before and we had both chiefs involved in those interviews, Chairman Kerrigan and the Chair of the COA Board. We interviewed nine individuals and we have, this week, we are looking forward to the next round of interviews, which will include our Finance Director, Cheryl Garibbi, Joe Muley, who's our Library Director, and Board of Health...
Jeff Pastor.
Jeff Pastor, thank you. And we will be looking, hopefully, to make an offer to a person in the next week or two, and so I'm really happy about that. And for planning and land management, there was a pretty good discussion between the Chair of the Conservation Commission, Jasmine, who is Jasmine Farinacci, who is our Planning and Community Development Director, and Roy Marabito in his Planning Board Chair role. The conversation really was around having gone through two rounds of solicitations for persons to come and take the conservation agent role and there was some discussion about, you know, are we not paying enough, et cetera? And so we tried to come together in a think-take type of thing and one of the things that Jasmine and I was exploring is the ability for somebody to get a little bit more than just conservation, the idea being that if someone is interested in being a planner or a land manager or even a director at some point, that it might be attractive to them to have a job that while the majority is conservation, they would have an opportunity to work on other more general planning or land management issues. And I think, you know, to couple with that, Jasmine could, is certainly a very busy department, it was a very busy board, they have a lot going on, and so Jasmine may find it helpful to, you know, offload a project or two. And we were able to look at that a little bit more critically and redevelop the job description, certainly with Tom Christopher's help, as he's quite knowledgeable about it, in terms of, you know, minimum qualifications, years of service, and some other things that he'd like to see as far as educational experience, and so we have, we've posted that last week. We've gotten quite a few calls from people who are either, you know, assistant planners in other communities or are working for larger communities in the planning department but in a little bit more finite areas and are interested in the hybrid model, the title of Assistant Director slash Conservation Agent has been well-received, and so we're hoping to have somebody, or Jasmine, to start at least the first round of interviews for that within the next couple of weeks. We also posted the Office Administrator position because that, the administrator resigned a couple of weeks ago and I would say, you know, that has been an incredible outpouring. We had, last time I checked, 48 applications for that particular position and they're only getting more, that doesn't mean they're all 48 highly qualified positions, but I think I can, you know, in just speaking with Jasmine and with Brian, who is also our Building Inspector, they just, they have a lot, a great pool to choose from. And so I would suspect, we had that open until filled, but I will credit Jasmine with coming up with the idea of advertising and including something about parents' hours or what used to be called mothers' hours, but it could be mothers' or fathers' or grandparents' hours, where, you know, the schedule is flexible, and so I think that as a collective management team, we're trying to come together and think of other ways to attract people to work in municipalities that isn't just surrounding money. And so I think that that was a really great decision by Jasmine, clearly well-received with, you know, almost 50 applications and it's only been five, six days, it's been out for less than a week, so we're ever hopeful on that one. And in the Town Clerk role, we did have some interviews, we didn't find anybody that was a certified town clerk and while that isn't necessarily a prerequisite, it would have been helpful to have somebody that has some municipal experience, particularly as we go into the election and the primary and just the differences that the state has made in allowing people to have absentee ballots for basically any reason or no reason at all. And so we're lucky enough to have a 30-year veteran of the town clerk world who retired not too long ago, Jimmy, and he is working in the clerk's office and has been as a temp and he has agreed to stay on for, through the election at least, if not more, and I think he's really had the ability to work with the Assistant Town Clerk, Amy Martin, and kind of strategize a way to, you know, deal with the volume of paper that comes in to there and putting things in a little bit more organization. It's not to say that it wasn't organized before, but I just think that there's some ways of doing it so that when people come and are looking for a document, they'll be able to easily find it for them. So that's what we have in place right now. The PJ Keating peer review was in, the supplemental peer review was in your packet. The next steps for that would be for the board to determine when you would like those groups to come back in and if you just want them to talk about what's in the supplemental or if there were specific items. I know we talked about noise and dust and whether you want all of that in one meeting or whether you want to schedule a couple, keeping in mind that CEI, who is the peer review candidate, or the peer review team, is, you know, under contract and being paid for by PJ Keating and PJ Keating has been very good about paying, you know, for the supplemental work, but I think, you know, at some point, you know, we have to be sort of respectful of what either of those groups are seeing as the end game here.
Indeed.
So maybe, I don't know if you want to pause there, just how we do it.
Yeah, we can pause there for a moment. We don't have meetings calendared yet, we're going to discuss that in a little bit. Our policies and procedures would have us to the first and third Mondays of the month, the first Monday of September, of course. the first Monday of September, of course, is Labor Day, so we can't do then. Tuesday is the statewide primary, which is a difficult day to do a meeting, and so we could do one on the 12th, at which we could consider some of the next steps on a number of items, and we could invite them to come to that if the, I'm just throwing this out to my board colleagues to see if that makes sense for you all. And then I would suggest, and this gets ahead of us to some of the next topics, that we have another meeting later in September, but that would be the week of the 26th. And then hopefully, we can get back into the first and third schedule in October. So I don't know what you, if both of you are okay with a September 12th meeting, or if you would rather another day.
So if we could just lay out, that will look on the calendar. I just wanted to make sure that, you know, we're not having like, I just want to see if we could just lay it out. That sounds, sounds good?
Sure. All right. There's other things later in the meeting that we'll discuss that I think will help add some color to the conversation, so.
So.
But, oh, sorry. So in, yes, we can figure out dates. I think the larger question is.
It's a storm window.
I know, I saw that, and I was wondering why you're opening. You can see it's a glass, not a screen.
Don't embarrass.
But in any rate, I'm sorry.
I can't see that.
The question is, would the board, we can discuss dates, would the board prefer one meeting to have them come back, or two? And would it be just about the Peer Review? I think it's important for us to hear about the updated Peer Review, but also discuss the things we discussed the last meeting, which was, I wasn't chair then, until later that evening. The noise and the dust, I think, were a specific concern, so I think having that addressed at whenever they come back is going to be really important, as well as the updated Peer Review. That's just my assessment, sorry. I yield to the gentlelady from Main Street.
So typically, the reason that we met, and we can't on Labor Day, that we met on the first and the third was because we were trying, we're out of cycle with planning board.
Indeed.
So rather than meet, and I think we're going to have to be extra supportive of our planning board right now, that it would be better during that week if we could move it till later, for example, a special, because it's going to be a special meeting anyway. So if we want to do a special meeting on, say, the 14th or 15th. And my preference would be, as we discussed at the last meeting, that we just combine the noise and dust and Peer View. I think if we're going to be bringing people in, rather than asking them to keep on returning, both citizens and CEI and Keating, they probably, they would also probably prefer to do it in one meeting. With that said, I would suggest that we will allow, pretty much have a dedicated meeting to that, because it's going to take up some time. So, and as far as the 26th goes, that's fine by me.
The week of the 26th.
You suggest just a second meeting on the 26th, so that's.
The week of the 26th. We can go through and we'll go through the rest of the schedule, but yes.
The regular, yeah.
Yep. So I guess what you're hearing, and Jason, I don't know if you echo what Alex and I are thinking relative to when we do bring them in, have as comprehensive a conversation as possible, so we can ask all the questions, get all the answers, and keep the ball moving down the field. Any objection, Jason?
Well, my ask is, the proposal laid out in calendars, those meetings, all the meetings, every meeting, so I just want to make sure we're not having meetings and meetings and meetings. So it sounds like there's some other things we need to discuss tonight, so let's lay them all out, and then I'm fine meeting on those days, but I don't want it to be the 16th and 17th and 18th. So let's just lay them out, make sure we got it all in, and I'm sure we did.
No, no, I totally agree with you on laying out the calendar. I'm asking, when, whenever we bring PJ Keating and CEI in, are you in favor of having a comprehensive meeting, whatever that is, so they cover as much, all of it, or breaking it out over a series of meetings?
I'm in favor of doing whatever it takes to help ensure that we can meet their October deadline before.
Perfect. Perfect, thank you. Okay.
So it should be a time to get back to the recruitment, or should I wait till after the report?
Well, let's let her finish her report, and then we can go through any questions.
Okay. So as part of the budget review and the planning, we've started a little early. I went to the Finance Committee meeting last week. I thought it was a really productive meeting, and we've been talking, both internally and myself and Sue Smiley, the Finance Committee Chair, about having a budget slash town meeting preview meeting, and I know that there are some rules and regulations, I believe they're unwritten, but they could be written, about meeting on Saturdays. And so the idea was tossed out to have a sort of, you know, start in the morning and have the departments come in and speak with both the Select Board and the Finance Committee about their, you know, requests for the upcoming year, and sort of some long-term planning, and I'd like to be able to do that in a way that, you know, allows as many people as possible to attend their own time, and yet I understand that Saturday is difficult, particularly for the Seventh-day Adventist community, so I just was hoping to hear some perspective and some information from the board.
So typically, and I, then I'll yield to my colleagues, typically, we've been respectful of our neighbors in South Lancaster, the Seventh-day Adventist community, who celebrates their Sabbath between Friday night and Saturday night in a very serious way, and so we've not had town elections, or town meetings, or things like that on Saturdays. I don't know that the type of meeting you are suggesting, which is sort of a day-long working session with town directors and town officials, whether that impedes, you know, or sort of goes against that tradition or not. To me, it's certainly a lot less than scheduling a town meeting on that day, or having an election on that day. So I would be, I could be convinced that that, that working on a Saturday for something like that would make sense, but I yield to my colleagues to see what they think.
Me?
Yes.
Jason.
You go ahead.
The, having, having meeting, budget meetings was something on Saturdays that we used to do, and they seemed to be very productive, because you could bring everybody together and do an all-day meeting. It is difficult, because people have so many obligations all the time now, Saturdays and Sundays and the work, so we could alternate, but weekend days seem to make the most sense for people because of work schedules. Alternatively, of course, we could do evenings. I believe we accepted a provision of Mass Law, or maybe it's a bylaw, that we cannot have town meetings on Saturdays, but that is something where we represent one person, one vote. So given the fact that we can record these budget meetings if we want to, and people can offer input at other times, I think that we can try to, as much as possible, pay respect to people who have other obligations or religious prohibitions from doing business on Saturdays. So.
Jason?
Yeah, so I'm in favor of discussing having town business on weekends. I'm of the opinion that there is not anything blocking that, other than maybe our bylaws, and I don't think our bylaws preclude it, I think they recommend it. I may be mistaken there, but I'm in favor, especially of starting the discussion and hearing what residents have to say. Every resident that I've spoken to, for example, has interest on having a town meeting on the weekend, just for daycare, and being able to get to it, and to obligations. So there's no vote on the table right now, but I'm in favor of furthering the discussion. Thank you.
Do you need something further, or just?
No, so I mean, what I wanted to make sure is that the board didn't see any issue, or, and I didn't want to disenfranchise any group, and I didn't want to offend any particular group. I also wanted to make it easy for the boards to hear things collectively, because when you, when you break them up over a period of, I mean, with the amount of budget information that'll come, and it'd probably take at least two weeks, if not more, of several meetings in a row, it becomes difficult to keep it all in line. So the idea of kind of condensing it.
I agree. So I think, yeah, so I think from the town business, planning, those things, I don't think you're getting any pushback from any of us on that. We're all for that. And then we just have to further have a conversation about whether we actually have a town meeting versus town officials having a meeting.
Yeah, so I'm just looking for town officials having a meeting.
And we are all for it.
Great, okay, so then I will speak with Sue, the Finance Committee Chair, and be back with some dates.
Sounds good, thank you.
And the last thing that was in your packet for me was the ARPA. I know there's been some questions. I know at the last meeting, Alex had expressed wanting to have sort of a collective idea of what came in versus what went out, so I provided a memo that details that, and then the one consulting and strategic planning, which was signed in 2021, I attached that only because I'm assuming that, you know, the board, and I was told that the board had input in this, but I just put that in because I wanted to make sure that it was clear what was, what was received for that $13,000. So the bill date says July through December, because obviously, they entered into a contact in 2021, and then that contract was paid in stages throughout 2022, but anyway, so that would be the only one that I attached. I think the rest are involved in meeting minutes, et cetera, that are relative to the other projects or expenses that were there. So just for the general purpose, we would, we, after all told, when we receive our final payment, which we have not yet, we will have received about $2.4 million. Thus far, we have either earmarked, or identified, or are in the process, or have completed the process, for spending $664,000 rounding, and so we will have about $1.75 million left, which, in talking with the Finance Committee, I feel like it would be very helpful for both of the groups, meaning the Select Board and the Finance Committee, to get together with staff, meaning myself and Cheryl, and develop, it doesn't have to be necessarily a hard and fast policy, but some idea of, do we want to use this for one time? Do we want to use this for unforeseen? Is this something that we want to spread out over a number of years? I think that that's a decision that needs to be discussed at both board levels as a policy decision just generally. And so right now, we're not entertaining any other uses for those until we have some answers from both boards.
Can I ask, is there a, because we received ARPA money at my work, but there were, there was a limitation in how many fiscal years that those dollars could be used in, I just want to make sure that we use them within the timeframe they're allotted.
I believe that there is, although I think that we would, I think the needs of the community are quicker than the number of years. I think it's five or six years, but I can certainly check on that.
Here's, I think you have to have it discussed, what you want to do, or have a plan by 2024 and spent by 2026. And as Kate said, we're probably going to be.
But not spent in total. You can also have, so if, if the $1.17 was going to be used, for example, to build a new beautiful building somewhere, or rehab a building.
Small, beautiful building.
You know, then, then as long as that's in the works, I mean, because we will encumber the funds.
All right. Any, okay, any questions for Kate's report? I know you had some about the recruitment updates, or comments.
I do have questions about both, actually.
Okay.
So thank you, Kate, for your report. It's always interesting. The, it looks like Orlando signed a contract, I think it's the same memo that we got, yeah, they're both December 23rd, 2021. Looks like the same thing. Signed a memo back on 12/28/21, just before he left. Honestly, I know we had talked about, he had suggested that we have an ARPA recruitment, and I don't, an ARPA consultant, I don't remember, but my, I don't remember yesterday. So if you could just see and look at what the scope or what was talked about, or this was signed. Now, this, to me, when I read this, it says that this work was supposed to be looking at a plan for how to develop criteria about spending ARPA, create filing and documentation and so on, communicate with local officials, and additional duties at $175 hours, or $125 an hour. So it looks like, was that money spent in 2021, or is it, was it, I know you said it was just billed, so has there been work done, or was it spent? Because I'd love to see that in July, was it spent recently, or was that spent back under, in December, when he signed, 2021? So, and do we have a plan? That I'd love to see planned, because the work brought it.
Yeah, so I'm going to have to ask probably Cheryl to come and report, report back on that. I haven't signed anything under that contract, so what's been done relative to, well, it really is only the ambulance, police cruiser, and school boiler, were all done under my tenure.
Right.
So I'm not sure how much involvement or not the other entity has.
I know this is before your time, so, but I just wondered, for the $13,042, it's not a large amount of money, but how much we're obligated for, what the contract, the contract here is pretty vague, it just says consult, and they're going to give us a plan. So for $13,000, I suspect we got some sort of a plan, but I'd like to see that, and whatever the bill was. The rest of the things, test kits, 66, and that COVID coordinator was this month. Now, I know we, under the CARES money, we had a COVID coordinator working with us, and then they recruited, but didn't have another one, but that looks like it was this month. Do you know what that is?
This month?
Well, it was July, August 2022, COVID coordinator?
I see.
Okay.
Oh, that could be a typo. It could be 2021. I apologize.
Okay.
That would make more sense.
It would make more sense, yeah.
For both of those, too.
Yeah, yeah, that would be great. The other things, like the police department cameras, we know about, the servers you talked about, that was one of the first things we did, ambulance replacement 350, school boiler replacement 150, that we did.
Cruiser we just did.
And the cruiser we just did.
Yep.
So those are the big bucks items that we know about, yeah.
Yeah, so, yeah, those are, those are typos, and I will certainly correct them. I apologize.
Yeah, so if we could just find, I'd love to see the plan that we paid 13, whatever it is for. I'm sorry, yes, I was talking.
Sorry.
Okay. No, no, I got it.
I just thought I could, but apparently I can't. My powers are limited on Zoom.
Zoom, yes, the, on the recruitment and replacement first, as everybody knows, Health and Human Services and planning are near and dear to my heart. In fact, before your time this time, and before Steve's time this time, but way back, when we served together, we helped create the Planning Department, and the planning, and I was a Conservation Commissioner, so these are positions that I would be likely to support, but my, my concern is a couple of things, is process. Until this agenda, I didn't know that we had created a new position, a new price. I still know very little about it, I haven't seen a lot of it. I found out about it because MMA sent out a job blast, and I would hope that to garner public support and to also have the debate that, and I would expect that this board, because we'd help manage, especially new positions, or growth of positions. Not saying that I wouldn't support it, I just want to be crystal clear on that, but I don't want to be derelict in our duties, especially when we have a tight budget, and we're talking about perhaps a future override and expansion in the middle of a budget year. And I know you've been very clear about trying to have more transparent budgeting, and I think the first step to doing that is to, for this board to talk about and approve positions. The other thing is, I know that of all these positions, the only one that's, we're statutorily mandated to have, the one that is a Town Clerk, and I've heard very good things about Mr. Mullins, and I gather he's technically our Town Clerk. Did we appoint him? I think we were supposed to. Okay. I forgot that one, too. So, you know, from everything I've heard, he has great customer service and he's capable. I know that we, I don't remember, I know we had some candidates from the past, but I don't remember and it seems like that we need to have. I haven't seen an advertisement out for that. Have we advertised for the town clerk?
We have.
Okay. Was that MMA or what was that?
We had it in MMA, we had it on Indeed, we had it on Monster, and we had it in the Town Clerks Professional Association.
So I know there hadn't been one for a while on the Conservation Agent. Has, did we do the town clerk recently? Should we do it again?
We did the town clerk recently. That's the process that I was just telling you. I don't believe that anybody that we talked to, there was one candidate that we were very interested in, but the person doesn't have any municipal experience. I'd like to get through the election with Mr. Mullin.
I agree with that.
And then I would seek to re-advertise for the position once that is over.
Because I would imagine any town clerk candidate worth their weight is likely in the community, focused on election, and is going to stick that out. So we really don't want to be recruiting.
So I would suggest, because we know how long recruiting takes and based on our other ones, is that we begin posting and recruiting for that prior to the election with the understanding and a caveat that we know that, you know, to be filled after the election. So people who are interested have time to apply and we have time to make a search. Because of course, after the election, then you start going into the holidays and everything else. So because that is so critical.
I would say that most, well, in my experience with town clerks, that no one, well, we could certainly post early. They're going to be focused on getting through early vote, absentee balloting, everything, getting through the election. So I can't imagine a lot of them being on Indeed during that timeframe. But certainly we can open the aperture on when to.
And I was pleased to see that things were posted on our website now. So thank you, that was great. That was good.
Jason's raising his hand.
No, sorry, Jason, go ahead.
No worries, yeah, I am. I'm grateful for the discussion, but I believe we voted and moved to allocate all this responsibility to Kate. So I mean, I think it's good that we can talk about it, but I think we've put the responsibility in our hands to make the best decisions. And, you know, and that's been the voted direction of the board. So I hope we can continue that.
So there is a lot, I mean, Kate, most, I mean, obviously, these positions are under the purview and will report to the, to the town administrator. The town clerk will be an appointment that we make. We considered the motion on, on appointments for staff. We're gonna, we're gonna do it again to clarify it with better language this evening. So just, but yes, you're right. I agree with you. And I, and I agree, and this process has been great. I appreciate your approach to tackling the issues in creative new ways and looking at how we can take the positions that we have and perhaps reshape them to meet the current need, not just try to continue to fill positions as they always were. So I'm grateful for that.
And Mr. Chairman, just as a point of clarification, the positions as outlined are all budget neutral, if not budget friendly. It's taking the appropriation for the entirety of the Planning Department and shifting hours and time around so that we are coming in under what was appropriated. So none of what I have proposed and done. I also went back because I was looking for clarification relative to what comes before the board, et cetera. And there haven't been job descriptions and those things that have come before, at least in the last decade and a half. And I think that that's probably a smart decision for, for all of the reasons of just having the continuity. The town code says that the policymaking board is the Board of Selectmen and that, you know, you're hiring a competent manager that's able to do that. And I would say, you know, being able to look at that and understand, and I appreciate the idea of, well, let's get the ad out there. But there's also an expense to that. And so I was trying to weigh the ability for there to be a cooling off period such that the drama or whatever it is that's, that the legislature has decided that anybody can vote by mail and having all of that done, once, you know, the clerk's office can take a deep breath, I think that's when people will advertise. So to have an advertisement out there for four and five months is not a good look into enticing people. It really does better when you are gonna post the job and then say that it's posted for three weeks to a month and then you're moving forward. To say that we're gonna do it and collect resumes for three months, I don't, I don't personally think that that's, that's a good thing. And my, having a background in HR, that would be something that is, is pretty frowned upon.
Yeah, I would just, I want to make sure that nothing I said was misinterpreted. I have all the faith in the world in your timing and how you plan to lay this out. So I, yeah, I want to make sure I restated that.
Yeah, and I don't disagree with the hiring during voting either. So I make sure that we don't lag, so. Okay.
I don't really lag.
She does not, she's not a big lagger.
No, no, I didn't, wasn't suggesting you.
Not a big lagger. Anything further in your town administrator report?
No, sir.
Okay. All right, administration, budget and policy. I'm gonna do this a little strangely since we have the special town meeting. Well, so we had a discussion to set the date for a town meeting as the number one item. So we can discuss now probably the number, where is it? Number nine item. So the number nine item on our agenda was to discuss the next steps with the recall petitions, assuming there was going to be a meeting of the board registrars tomorrow. As has been stated already at this meeting, we've received communication from three members of the Planning Board as well as a letter from the two remaining Planning Board members, which I'll read into the record now, dated August 16th, addressed dear members of the Select Board. I received this before walking into this meeting. So as you have likely been made aware, Lancaster Planning Board Chair Roy Mirabito and Board Members C. Peter Kristof and Carol Jackson tendered their resignations this morning, August 16th, 2022. These resignations became effective at 9:00 a.m. today pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 41, Section 11. We are hereby notifying the Select Board of these vacancies and asking the Board to call a special meeting relative to that matter. Sorry, relative to the matter. Consistent with state statute, the meeting must be scheduled at least one week from today and shall be called as a joint meeting between the Select Board and the Planning Board. While the Planning Board will not have a quorum, we will be able to meet with the Select Board to jointly discuss and vote, if appropriate, to appoint up to three members to fill the Planning Board vacancies. Please let us know if there is any additional information you may need regarding this important matter. Thank you for your support. Sincerely, Kendra Dickinson and Frank Streeter, members of the Lancaster Planning Board. Look at that.
I listened, thank you.
Thank you, good, there you go, for the record. And so therefore, there will not be a recall election. So number nine on our agenda is not necessary. But number one is a special town meeting and scheduling it. And so I want to run through some discussions that we've had today relative to this to give folks perspective. We have five Planning Board members in our town. A majority must be present to conduct business, a quorum of three. We now have two sitting members of our Planning Board. So it is critically important that we appoint at least one, up to three new members in order for us to continue the, having to continue to have a functioning Planning Board. There's an awful lot before the Planning Board right now, an awful lot before the town right now. There's an awful lot of discussion of having a special town meeting next month, which is still our wish and desire. And in order to do that, an awful lot of work has to get done in the next few days and weeks. And so I would say to the board, a couple of things. There needs to be a meeting that cannot take place within, it has to take place more than one week, but needs to take place with all due haste at that point. Because we are now, we now do not have a functioning Planning Board. So we are not allowed to fill a vacancy in that first week, but we are encouraged to fill it as soon as humanly possible.
Stephen, can I interrupt you for a sec?
I'm just trying to get through the basic information setting, but sure, go right ahead.
So I, obviously, this is new to all of us. So I'm assuming we checked with council or whatever we did.
I should have said at the outset, all of this has been run through town council.
Okay, so when somebody resigns, is that, that you have to wait a week?
That's.
By the states, by, by Chapter 40, MGL 44.
Okay.
It's specific to this, to regulatory planning.
Okay, okay, so at least a week, could be longer, but all right, minimum, okay.
Right, which is why I would propose, and I've discussed this, because there's not a quorum, I could have this conversation with the remaining Planning Board members, discuss having a meeting next Tuesday, August 23rd at 9:00 a.m. to make an appointment for, at one of the slots so that we can create a functioning Planning Board. The reason why I'm not pushing for three slots initially is because we have had, we have three very qualified candidates who applied when we appointed Frank Streeter to a vacancy not very long ago. We've all had a chance to interview them or at least read some of their communications. What I'd like to do is reach out to them through Kate to see if those three remaining people still have interest in serving on the Planning Board. Those of whom, those of the three who still have an interest would indicate such to Kate. And then a joint meeting would be held at 9:00 a.m. on the 23rd, where we can interview any of the candidate of those three who remain interested in the job and make an appointment as soon as possible, well, make an appointment at that meeting, which will then facilitate the Planning Board's ability to reorganize, reappoint a chair and continue the business that they need to be doing for the town with all due haste. At the same point, we will begin, Kate will post and we will solicit submissions to be appointed to the other two remaining slots. Those submissions, my recommendation would be, would be to have them due on Monday, September 12th, for then a similar process as we engaged in when we appointed Frank, to have a joint meeting again and interviews and appointments at a date to be determined. Doing it this way and appointing one on Tuesday of the three remaining candidates we've already vetted gives us, gives any townspeople a chance to go back and follow that meeting that, in which we appointed Frank and listened to the, the information and, and then gives us a chance to appoint someone quickly so that the Planning Board can get back up and running as soon as possible and then allows us to appoint two other members at a later date. So this, this allows us to keep the, keep the process moving along and give us a functioning Planning Board as soon as humanly possible. So that is the latest on that. Now, relative to the special town meeting, there was supposed to be, as I mentioned at the outset, there was supposed to be a hearing tomorrow evening for the rezoning of parcels up in North Lancaster. That was supposed to take place so that we could schedule a special town meeting later in September. I was, I was prepared to come to this meeting and propose September 27th as a date for a special town meeting with a Select Board meeting just prior to that, which is why I said we would have a meeting later, the week of September 26th. In speaking with the remaining Planning Board members, there is a belief that we could have, we can schedule a hearing for August 29th and that we can have, they believe they can have a report turned around by September 9th to the Select Board and that we can still make, make the September 27th deadline for a special town meeting to consider those zoning bylaw changes and any other items that we might put on the warrant, the warrant of which we need to debate and discuss when we open and close, but Kate's gonna get back to us on the parameters around that. Am I missing anything?
No.
I just, I'm now taking a breath. Just because you were in the meeting. Oh, and I've just got a very important question. So all, all of these appointments, whether it's the one we appoint on Tuesday or the additional two, all will serve until the May election, which is very important to note. These people will be appointed to serve until May, at which point, because we had Frank Streeter as a replacement for Mr. Wilson, we will have four slots on the Planning Board up for grabs in the election in next May. But because of the resignations, the folks elected in May will fill terms of differing lengths. So in May, there will be two full five-year terms that will be on the ballot, one one-year term and one two-year term. Did I, just before, just because they were both in the meeting, did I catch everything?
That is correct.
Now I took a breath, I'm gonna take a little water. Questions?
Okay, question, let's, first, let's break it down and make it easy to.
I thought I did.
You did, you did an excellent, excellent thing.
Thank you.
Everybody responded very quickly. So the first thing would be recruitment. So if we could.
Sorry, just, I'm gonna just clarify a question. Recruitment.
An appointment. You have the first strategy that you proposed, which was appointing one person Tuesday morning.
One person of the three who had applied.
Yes, 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 yes.
I just want to clarify.
Recapping, I could recap the whole thing, but no, you don't want me to do that.
No.
No. And then having a recruit, a full recruitment for September 12th, with applications due September 12th, correct?
Yes.
For the remaining members.
I can run through all the deadlines again.
No, no, please don't.
Okay.
So for me, and this is not about the discussion at town meeting because I think we need to talk about that in greater depth. I think that sounds like a bona fide strategy that we're glad we'd support.
Thank you. And I don't want to speak for the remaining Planning Board members, but this plan was developed in concert with them, so.
Yes, sounds like.
Jason has his hand raised.
And Jason has his hand up. I'm sorry, Jason, my other hand.
Steve?
Yes.
I can't, I can't wipe the smirk off my face. I owe you a piece of the eye for being chairman right now. I cannot tell you how grateful I am, so, thank you. In all seriousness, though, I would like to say awesome job coming up with plans on short notice. I had a couple situations where you gotta make those plans quickly and a sock and you've done an excellent job, so, well done. You had, this sounds fantastic, we should have a vote. I've just hit my pulse, so we're supposed to be doing a great job and thank you. I just briefly comment regarding the upcoming warrant and the articles. I want to, in my opinion, I want to slow down a little bit, just have a conversation, respect to the MOA, making sure everything's I's dotted, T's crossed. But I'm confident you've done all that and I just need to trust the verify, and then we move forward. And I still got the smirk on my face, so thank you.
Well, I appreciate that. And I will say, although I got to present this incredibly complex plan, Kate has spent the, well, I think we've all spent the vast majority of the day on the telephone, but Kate spent a lot of time with town council and with others working to help develop this. So this was.
She read the MGL.
And she read the Mass General Law.
Something to say about that.
So this was certainly a team effort, as is all the work we do here in town. So I don't believe we need a motion or a vote on this, do we? So the plan will be, and we will notice, a joint meeting for the Planning Board and the Select Board for this coming Tuesday, 9:00 a.m. Did we say we're doing it all Zoom or do we doing it hybrid? Kendra, I'm looking at you, I can't remember.
You had said you were doing it hybrid.
We are doing it hybrid, okay. So candidates or board members can participate either in person or hybrid. And Kate will reach out to the three remaining candidates, determine their interest and certainly let, I would at least ask you to let, I'm assuming you will, the remaining Planning Board members and, and the Select Board know what the state of play is. I see your hand up, Rob, I'll be right with you. State of play is before we enter the room on, on Tuesday at 9:00 a.m.
Well before that.
And also in this, in this process, we do, we do have the capability to, at the appropriate time, even though the, so we will, anyway, that's how the schedule will go. Yep, so. And then also, also we will post for submissions for the other two remaining spots.
Correct.
Yes, sorry, Jason, go ahead.
So in all seriousness, just a clarifying question. Do we have any exposure with technically not advertising this single position, right? We're only going back to the three, well, no exposure, okay. Awesome, thank you.
Okay. Any further? Any further questions, comments, or concerns about that? So, the hope is, and the number one item on the thing was to discuss and set a date for a special time meeting, the hope is, I believe, if this process is adhered to, which it should be, barring some reason to move the special time meeting, that we should look to have it on Tuesday, September twenty-seventh, and have a, a special select board meeting one hour prior, but.
So, I do have questions about that, I don't know if you would...
I do, I do, but I just wanted, I wanted to wrap this, and then I'll go right to you, Rob, so I will yield to the board members first.
So, I do have questions about the special time meeting, but they involve more around the other partner packet tonight, and I think, referring to, I think Jason talked about the MOU committee, which I sort of wanted to see the, because obviously that's relevant to this. So, we are the sponsors of this, of this, of this.
Yes.
So, as sponsors, I looked at that, just to make sure that I had my, mine around, and certainly I don't want this resignation to slow this process down, which it could, and doesn't sound like it has to.
Yeah.
Which is good, the, given the fact that there is the concept plan that has to go with anything, there's two concept plans, of which I have some questions about, that are probably best answered by a planning member or capital group, and they can be done at the hearing, I believe, or that.
You can, I, so I will state, and I should have said this, I will be out of town for the twenty-ninth, I will attempt to zoom in, but I have a work conference, and I've asked Kate to present on behalf of the select board, the zoning, as we are the sponsors of the items, I've asked Kate to be prepared to present on the zoning change.
Are you talking about, okay, so are you...
At the hearing, at the hearing.
At the hearing?
At the hearing, Kate will be prepared to present on behalf of the zoning change, on behalf of the select board.
Okay, so...
Because I'll be out of town.
So, I think as a board, it would be good to have a discussion about this, because I have some questions about what we are sponsoring, some of the things just don't make sense to me, but there was just a quick overview, looksy, that I like, that I like to do. So, either we can have an intermediate meeting, or we can, you know, talk about some of that.
We can have a conversation right now, if you'd like. Let me let Rob ask his point first, and then, I mean, go ahead.
Yes.
Come right around.
I'm pretty sure my memory is correct.
Come closer, because you were...
I think my memory is correct, but...
Let's say Rob's eye, I...
Rob's eye, I wonder if we can leave on.
I'm gonna know your address by the end of the year.
I only remember two other people besides Frank that, that talked that night.
Spoke, yes, but another person had submitted for consideration and had some Zoom difficulties.
He didn't check.
Really?
He had some Zoom difficulties.
Okay.
But thank you, I appreciate that, that clarification, yeah.
I thought that that person withdrew his name, and therefore not being included.
No, they did not, no. They were a candidate, even that night, they just weren't able to present. Right. So, I, I would say, why don't we...
So, as you know, I looked at this today, and I do, there's two concept plans, I would, so my, my first question would be, which one? That's a question you said to ask tonight, so which one are we presenting?
Well, the latest concept plan.
No, the two, it's two.
Okay. Well, can, can I suggest that we bang through the rest of the agenda, then we can dig in deep on this?
No, 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 you just asked, so I said that...
No, I said tonight is a great time to talk about it.
Okay, okay.
I'd like to bang through the rest of the agenda, and then we can go back to it.
Okay.
If you have questions, and we wanna write them down, then we can get through as quickly as we can. Next item is to discuss and set a date for a special town meeting preview meeting. So, this, it's a concept that came up before the, the annual town meeting by many folks, and then by a lot of well-intentioned citizens this time around, to have a completely unbiased presentation of the facts of what people are voting on at the special town meeting. Same concept, of course, to have, hopefully, before every special or regular town meeting, so the people have an understanding of what actually is on the warrant, and not just reading a motion and having to understand everything when they read the motion in the warrant. And so, the idea would be to have that a week or two prior to the special town meeting, have neutral parties present the facts on what does the zoning change mean, what does the forty R change mean, and I, I've been approached by several folks in town to discuss this, I wanted to raise it to the board, because I think it's, it's a good effort at informing the public of what is gonna be presented before them, rather than just having them see it when they walk in the door. So, I, I don't know what my colleagues think about the concept of having, really, it's an information session, I wouldn't wanna call it a forum, I don't want it to be a debate. Hearings and reports, and the last several years have been part of the debate, I want this to be, for whatever's approved to go on the town meeting warrant, an explanation session for townspeople to have a very clear understanding of what's coming before them, and what's, what they're being asked to vote on. So, I don't know, if you both have thoughts, Jason?
Yeah, I'll go first, so, I'm not doing a good job of choosing my words here.
That's all right.
I, um, I respectfully disagree with anyone asserting that things today have been biased, or whatever insinuation that means. I myself have worked very hard to be unbiased, and I understand that people don't agree with that, and I'm okay with that, but I'm here to say that I have worked very hard to be unbiased, so, you know, if people want different people presenting, that's cool, but that's not gonna change any of the facts, so, and it's not gonna change any of the hard work that folks have done, so more talk is good, all for it, let's do it, but I'm, I'm gonna respectfully disagree with that assertion that things today have been biased.
Oh, no, I'm not suggesting, I, I'm not suggesting, I'm suggesting that no presenter be someone who has a particular bias, I'm not saying that anybody in particular, I mean, you know, I think Victoria does a fantastic job of advocating for the forty R, I think Kate, on behalf of the town, advocating, or discussing the importance of the, of the zoning change, she does not advocate, discussing the zoning, the specifics of the zoning change, I think are really, are important, but that's, I agree with you, I was not asserting that, that anyone here had a bias, I was just stating that the desire is to have an unbiased discussion, which I think we all want to have, just, okay. The double thumb from Jason, so we're good there. Ms. Turner, thoughts, comments, questions, concerns?
Well, anybody who knows me, or follows what I've done here, has, knows that I'm all about forums and transparency and cards. In fact, when we were approaching this issue last year, we all agreed to sending out a card with facts, and, and or at least facts directing to people to a website, sort of like the voter information, excuse me, booklet, that we've done it, that we have written in the past, it's a lot of work, but it's very helpful, especially for people who can't attend forums, and if we get, find something that would get boiled down, so finding something like that to serve as a basis for a presentation, if you like to call it that, would be very helpful, would be great, and we could, if we didn't want to mail them, because that's an expense, we could certainly print some and put them in areas of general distribution, such as the post office, and the library, and so on, so, I think that that's something that would serve as a basis for, for this, whether it be forum, or whether it be the card, or the combination of both, which I think that we need to do, because there's so much confusion about this, I think witnessed by the fact that there's been years of discussion, but there hasn't been years of facts or agreement, I think that we should do that ahead of time.
So, you're on board?
Um, yes, I'm on board, but I want to prepare for that with a, with a written piece ahead, you know, prior to that, and I know we'd have to get that probably vetted by at least council, but oftentimes, if you could have put something out like that, it means the AG too.
So, I don't, well, so explain that, we need to have voter, like, to explain to voters what's happening in a special time meeting, would you need the attorney general to review it?
Well, when we sent out a voter information booklet in the past.
Right, but that's for like, yeah, but that's for like an election, you're informing people, for an election of things.
Yeah, I don't know if you have to on this case or not, you don't think so?
No, you definitely don't. Because, I mean, how many special town meetings have we all been to, and I've never had one?
No, I, well, it's not safe, this is obviously...
I know, but if we're required to, we would...
So, that's, that's fine, that that would help expedite this.
I wanna be clear, I am all for all modes of, of informing people about, so I'm all for many, many different disciplines. What I find with the, with the explanatory presentation is, particularly since it'll be recorded, is folks who can't attend, what's helpful is people in the room, or folks can submit questions in advance, folks in the room, or questions in advance can be asked, which in large measure will probably cover most of the likely questions you'll get. If you have an unlikely question, then we would encourage you to attend, and then that will exist for people to watch at three in the morning if they want, or on Saturday afternoon, or whenever, as they prepare to go to, to the town meeting, they don't have to just show up at that, at that meeting.
Yeah, I, I ran into a woman recently who was asking me questions about this, and she said, oh, the town sent me a card, and I said, no, the town didn't send anything out yet, but, you know, maybe we can get something together, we'll have a forum, hopefully we'll have a forum or presentation, and they took some of the cards that had been going out around election time, I think, as town-sponsored, so I think it's important that we have, you talked about, just a, an overview, there was a misunderstanding there.
Yes.
I also think that it's important, given the fact that our planning board is shorthanded, Jasmine is short-staffed, and this is a short timeframe, and there's, I have a lot of questions about the, I'm sure other people do too, about the concept plans, that perhaps we want to invest in sending this out to sort of, I know this would be at our expense, but I think it's a good five thousand, or whatever real spent, to an overview, to a planner, to look at this and come up with, because people keep on asking about costs, for example, this is gonna solve all of our financial woes, or it won't, it's gonna impact all of the environmental horribly, or it won't, just to try to help get us a basis on that.
So, we'd have to go through a procurement process to get a consultant to then look at...
No, you don't, not for that kind, not for that.
Well, we don't know what it costs.
Yeah, but you do not have to do, you'd say, you can put out something for, we frequently do send things out.
I'll be right with you, hold on.
So, I think that that would be something, given the fact, I think that that would help, I think that would help expedite this and get it to the people as quickly as possible.
Expedite what?
Expedite getting good information for, for a forum, for a town meeting, and help Jasmine and the rest of our staff get a good comprehensive overview of the proposal, because we are the sponsoring agency, so we have to make sure...
But it's our job to then sponsor, we're sponsoring the proposal, it's our job to...
We're sponsoring the proposal, the capital group wrote, wrote, correct?
And so, you want then a third party to do what exactly?
I would like a third party, on behalf of the select board, to look at this, and also have the input from the MOU committee that has to come into this, and evaluate everything, and say to us...
On what criteria, evaluate on what criteria?
We, to, there are claims in here, and there are discussions in here, and say, is this the best, on the, what's, the criteria would be, is this in the best interest of Lancaster?
But it's a subjective term.
Okay, so we can develop the criteria together, I mean, that's a very...
You and I and everyone in the room is gonna have a different example of what's in the best interest of the town.
Well, the three of us, as we're the sponsors, right?
Right.
We're sponsoring this, so, and I think that that's, I think it's important to have that...
This, to me, seems eleventh hourish to be suggesting.
We just got this.
But we, we knew it was coming, and we've, we've had, we've had earlier versions.
Yeah, we had earlier versions.
This was sent on six twenty-nine.
Okay, so, what I'm not saying years ago, yes.
That is not just now, though, that was six weeks ago. Jason has his hand up.
Yeah, I'd just like to talk of resources we currently have in Lancaster, working on, you know, this North Lancaster development opportunity, so we have Jasmine in the department, and Kate supplementary, we have our development lawyer team work, also working on it, and we have multiple committees working on it, and I think it's been sent out to a bunch of different committees, so there are tremendous amount of people working on it, and I would be of the opinion that adding more to that, I wouldn't, I don't understand why we could do that, because we already have so many resources, of financial and time-based, already working on it, so, yeah, I just wanted to just speak what we currently have, folks.
Thanks, Greg.
I guess I would also just add, Mr. Chair, that while I understand that, I think that we have a very professional staff, and I think that, you know, we're, we were hired to give information to the board, and so, to hire somebody else to do the jobs that I believe, certainly that I'm being paid to do, and Jasmine's being paid to do, I don't, I just don't understand that, because I think I'm, I will, we, we will be able to go through this, and if you were to take the, the document, I just went through the packet, by the way, Alex, and there's only one, there's only one concept plan that's in there, but it, it's dated July twenty-ninth, and the, there's only one small minor difference from what was sent out both in June and in May, so if you combine the documents on your computer, it'll, it'll illuminate what the differences are, and the differences are really nuanced in the language and not in the map, so this concept has been around for about six months, it's actually the similar concept before I was hired, and I think that, you know, the idea of, of sort of going back through perhaps some of those meetings, and we can certainly summarize that, if that's something that would be helpful.
And look at the cost, I'd like to see, you know, the costing study broken down, that'd be great, and most important, Jason has said, I know the last couple MOUs, I went to the last one, but I couldn't get in, and I think it turns out it was canceled, but...
It was.
When will the MOU, because that has been very pivotal to this project, when will the MOU have their final report?
I'm sorry, what was your question, when will the MOU, what?
Have a final report, because obviously people are weighing a lot, looking forward to the, um...
So, I'll look, I'll allow this question, and then we get to move through the rest of this, this is not on the agenda, so I just want, if you...
It's part of this.
We're discussing the, having a special town meeting forum.
Right, right, and timed, yep.
Jason, you wanna answer that?
Yeah, so, the MOU is about ninety-five percent done, we really just need to fill in the blanks, although it's been made available everywhere, so, yeah, it's about ninety-five percent done, it's really done to brass tacks, right, like dollars and cents, a couple pieces of language around third parties, and maybe uses, I think, but it's, it's basically ready, and I think, I, I actually don't want to say anything else, so, I, I have no concerns about the MOU having ample time to be able to be reviewed by everybody in front of special town meeting, and, and just to reiterate, right, all, everything we're talking about right now is in preparation to getting to vote, right, like, a lot of this conversation, in my opinion, should really happen at town meeting, right, like, like, if, if, we, we gotta vote on this, like, there's so much conversation we're trying to have upfront before the vote, like, the town meeting is the, is the, is the place really to have all of these discussions as a town, so, anyway, that's my point, and let's hopefully answer your question, thank you.
So, hopefully at the next meeting, you'll have the MOU done for this one, is what I'm hearing, and...
You commit to that, I commit to next meeting.
Okay, I heard it was ninety-five percent.
No, he, he, all he said was, it's ninety-five percent, they're gonna fill in some blanks, and it will be, he has every expectation that it would be prepared and ready for a special time meeting.
Okay.
No other assertions were made.
Okay, so...
Again, we're just talking about the special time meeting forum, preview forum, so, if there's anything more relevant to that, we can...
The preview forum, I think, is a great idea, time a great, all that, my, was not, I have full faith in our staff, Kate, you, and Jasmine, obviously, we talked earlier in the meeting about how everybody was short-staffed, and this is very quick, particularly in front of a forum, so it was offering extra support to make sure that we had a good presentation.
It's quick, but not new, so, there's, the work can be dealt with, with all due haste. Hearing nothing else on that, the next item is to review and take action on the warrant for the two thousand and twenty-two state primary to be held on September sixth, two thousand and twenty-two, in the town hall, six ninety-five Main Street, from seven AM to eight PM. Is there a vote necessary, or do we just have to sign?
There's a vote necessary, and because Mr. Allison is, right, he can either authorize someone to sign on his behalf, or come and visit in the next day.
Jason, who would you like to authorize, or do you plan on coming back?
I'm trying to think who I would like to kind of authorize.
You can authorize Kate.
No funny jokes, I don't have any funny jokes, yeah, absolutely authorize proxy Kate to sign, please.
Okay, so, is there a motion to accept the warrant as printed, would you like to take a look, do you have questions, comments, concerns?
I looked at it, and it looked great, so I'd make an, I would offer a motion to execute the warrant as printed for September sixth, with his looksy signature, it was for September sixth, two thousand and twenty-two election. With his proxy signature, it was for September 6th, 2022 election, with a proxy signature for Jason, by Kate Hodge.
Is there a second? Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor, Mr. Allison?
Aye.
Ms. Turner?
Aye.
Mr. Kerrigan, who is signing already, aye, 300. Congratulations, warrant, you have been authorized. I would like to have tabled liaison discussion, until we can have some more time on that, if that's amenable to my colleagues.
That would be great.
Two thumbs up, great, awesome. I also, the next item is a delegation, and this is something that I wanted to look at more earlier, so long ago that I wasn't chair then, the good old days, I call them. Delegation of certain personnel-related authorities to the town administrator. Is there a motion relative to that?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to appoint and remove town employees for whom the Select Board actively according to priorities. Such appointments, terminations will be deemed effective at least one day after providing your notification of said appointment by the Town Administrator and barring majority vote, Select Board rejecting this statement.
It should be rewritten.
Okay, was this in the packet that I missed it?
This is, has been in the packet in the past, and it was on the agenda, I brought it, talked about.
So I will, I will second it for discussion, but.
All right, now there is discussion time. Any discussion, Mr. Allison?
I'm grateful to have Kate, and she has all of my confidence in her, will make the best decisions for the.
Thank you. You can, and I will remind folks, originally there was other language in there, and we finessed it down to this tighter language that gives Kate the authority she needs to do the job she's been hired to do. As I said when I got this job, I'm a firm believer, when I lead an organization or a group, that my job is to be as clear as possible with the people that I hire, hire the best people, give them the resources to do it, and let them do the job. And that is what Kate is doing in, in spades. She's doing a fantastic job, and this just clarifies some, so that we can speed up some hiring and things.
So I'm going to, I had a vote against this, or asked to table it. But the, I, I agree that Kate is very capable, has a strong HR background. And not, this is not meant to be a slight to Kate. It is meant to be that we have a town administrator, this is usually the authority of a town manager. The people voted for us to do such, so we have that responsibility. On the other hand, I think parsing this out and talking about the discipline and so on should be, should rely with Kate, as it has with other town administrators. But I think that we are responsible to the people for, and I, for the rest.
So I would say, I was the one who moved to table it in May or June. It's been available as a tabled item for review for many folks. I do think it's a necessary step in the right direction, so.
Right, and is.
I, I won't be, well, we are in the middle of discussion on that, an existing motion. I won't second a motion to table it, but.
Okay, even though I did say it, but anyway, okay.
Well, I normally would, if, if this was a new item in our packet and we wanted more time to think about it, but this has been since May or June.
So we did, when we tabled it, and then the next meeting, we voted to give Kate authority, when we had some language changes, and I hadn't seen that.
We gave her contract authority, this is hiring authority, two different authorities. Two were presented at the one meeting, we gave her, the next meeting, we did contract. We waited on this, we have this, and now put that in the folder.
Okay, well, and so I would love to, and I could have missed this in the packet, but I can see it in my packet, so that would be really helpful. I'd like to give.
You've decided, your name.
Is it in, is it in the packet, Kate?
It's been in, it's been in table, no.
It's not my motion.
No, it's mine.
It's, it's. Okay.
And it was in previous packets.
I just saw the emails back and forth, so.
That's because I was clarifying language with her.
Okay.
Which is perfectly within my right.
No, it is, it is, but it would be nice to be, that's why it's nice to have the discussions like that. So I feel that I'm not, I'm, I am voting against this because I feel, not because I have any concerns about Kate, but because I feel that I am ill-informed and haven't had time, and that's it.
I appreciate that. All right.
Some, some more discussion?
If you have more discussion to be had, certainly.
I, I, from my perspective, like, I'm hearing everything that's being said, from my perspective, this was made available as part of our 48-hour, minimum 48-hour notice of the agenda. Everybody, I mean, I, I felt like I knew it was on there, I didn't feel blindsided. And, you know, I can't speak to anybody else, but in my position, I feel like, you know, two parts. One, this is something we talked about months ago, and in addition, it's been part of the agenda. To me, I'm not surprised. Thank you.
So, because you spoke, the, the line item that I saw on my agenda, and I've been having, I was very appreciative, because despite objections, the board, I bet my agenda today, they printed it this morning, the, it says delegation of certain personnel-related authorities to the town administrator, Kerrigan.
Right.
In past times, we had backup or discussions of what the agenda would be, or anything like that, here. So there was no backup, so as trying to be informed, no, I didn't feel, I still don't feel informed.
So I will say, I developed this language based on a language that was in our packet prior to, and was tabled. When things are tabled, for me, I tend to put them. I tend to put them aside, because I know they're going to come back up, and then I am prepared when they, when they come back up.
Yes, but I would not know that, and didn't agree with it then, so. The discussion was brief, but, and I don't think meaningful enough, but that's okay. I am, I've been outvoted before, so let's go.
Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Allison, all in favor, say aye, Mr. Allison. Ms. Turner?
Nay.
And Mr. Kerrigan, aye, that is 2-1-0. The motion is agreed to. Language. All right, next item up for bid, we have Select Board gift acceptance policy. No one's given me any gifts, but it is important to have a policy. And Kate, I yield to you to present on this.
Sure, so I, I provided a draft acceptance of gifts. We're calling them administrative policies, and that was in the packet. I also emailed it out before the packet was available. I believe it went out about a week and three days ago. So it's essentially just consistent with Chapter 44, Section 53A of MGL. Well, I would love it if persons would come with large donation checks. Since then, my long three months here, that hasn't happened. But I think the idea of doing something similar to a gift account through the Health and Human Services has become something that we've, we've talked about, and certainly we talked about at, you know, the interview level. And I am expecting that, that we have sort of a friends of, similar to the friends of the seniors, so that we can help people when, when they may not qualify, or they may not meet thresholds for government assistance, but yet still, we, we want to do that. I think it would be similar to the community chest funds that Stowe utilizes, Bolton has a neighbors fund, et cetera. So this would be the first step, is that the, the gift, depending on the denomination, would come in front of the board, the board would accept it. And then it becomes, you know, handled, town money, but handled in a separate account. That then, you know, we, we would be able to track separately than just inside the levy.
Okay. Is there any vote needed at this point?
Well, yes, because it's a policy. The board would need to vote on it. You, you don't have to vote on it tonight, we, we don't have any checks lying in wait.
Nothing lying, yeah.
That would be a great problem to have, so.
Does the board feel like they have enough information to vote tonight? Otherwise, we can table it and vote it at a later date.
Well, the, so just as a couple, I think having a gift policy is a great idea. Something that we've been, we have done a lot of. I'm surprised, to be honest with you, there isn't one, because we have formally accepted gifts as a board, especially recently, I think, to the fire department. And there's been occasions when they've come into the police department and the Council on Aging. There is a Council on Aging gift fund, are you familiar with that?
Yes.
Okay. So I don't know if that asks, and I think there are, of course, there are other nonprofits, such as the Associations for Public Safety and.
So those wouldn't be covered by this, correct?
Those are private nonprofits.
This would change the existing gift accounts, which were not set up, in my opinion, properly or legally, into being legally vetted gift accounts under the statute that then have to be properly accounted for during an audit.
So the, so the existing gift accounts, this would cover, they would remain essentially the same?
Well, they'd have to be restructured.
But they would be.
Yes.
The money doesn't go away, the money will stay. It will just be subject to transparency and through the audit.
Okay, well, that sounds like a wonderful idea.
So again, does the board need more time to consider this policy and vote on it at a later date? Or do you feel comfortable doing it now? I am, I have read through it, I'm comfortable with it, but I'm perfectly happy to yield Jason his thumbs up. But if you'd like to table, we can.
And generally, I think this is great, because it cites Massachusetts general law, and we assume that those are the best practices. The Conservation Commission Fund.
Is generally the law.
The Conservation Commission Fund and historical duty. These tended to be in the past, they were under the care and custody of those departments. Now it looks like they're under the discretion of the Select Board.
So for MGL, Chapter 40, that's the part real and personal property, Sections 8, C, and D, those are separate, and it authorizes the commission to accept real property and personal property subject to the approval of the board. So that's a two-step process.
Okay.
Because it's a regulatory board, and because it's a gift of real property. So if anybody were to.
Give land or house.
Sell land or, or anything, or, or want to gift a parcel or piece of their subdivided land, Conservation actually has to vote to accept it before the board does. And that's the difference, is that the Select Board doesn't supersede Conservation accepting it.
Perfect.
Okay, and, just so we can get this off our desk. The current Conservation Fund and/or Planning don't look like they fall into this. Not that people are giving those as gifts typically.
So those are not gifts, which is why this says that it's not applicable to payments for service renders, fines, fees, or replacement of damaged property. That's an entirely different MGL, which we are wholly compliant with.
That's good to know.
Yes, indeed.
Excellent, okay, that's great.
All right, is there a motion to accept the Select Board gift policy?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
A debate or discussion, hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye, Mr. Allison?
Aye.
Ms. Turner?
Aye.
Mr. Kerrigan, aye, 300. Congratulations, we can now become compliant with the law. All right, next item, Ms. Turner, you asked to put on the agenda, so request FOIA authority.
So the reason I wanted to put this on is that we have had, and I actually sort of dovetails into the next item, the open meeting law complaint. We have had a lot of, I personally have been the subject of a lot of Freedom of Information Act requests and open meeting law complaints. And they've become, I feel they are certainly burdensome to, to staff. And in general, they are something that is very of, of general interest. For example, there was an open meeting law complaint against.
But this is FOIA, not a.
I understand that, but it's part and parcel, part and parcel of the same.
Right, I just want to stay on the topic of.
It, it is, it is, you'll see, be patient. The open meeting law complaint, which was preceded by and supported by a FOIA when we were hiring Jeff Nutting, and people felt there was some, thought there was a conspiracy about that. So I think it's important that if these come in, that we should.
If what comes in, sorry.
For FOIA, first, I'd like to guess, I guess I would say, first, I know we have a public records officer.
Yes.
We actually have several public records officers, right? Town clerk and Kathy Rocko, my understanding. Is there, so not to recreate the wheel, is there a policy about how they are dealt with?
So mass generalize the policy. We have an internal procedure, which I have here, which Kathy keeps as up to date as we can. That was one of the subjects that we discussed at the staff meeting on Monday, about making sure that when people receive records requests, that Kathy is just being generally aware of it. We received 238 so far in the last 18 months.
Yeah, it's crazy.
But the, the regulations are that any person or any entity can request any document at any time. They don't have to give their name, they don't have to give their address, they don't have to put it in writing. They don't have to disclose what they need it for. They simply need to outline a method in which to receive the information or the reasons why the information can't be disclosed, period. So we, we can't have a policy that supersedes MGL, and MGL is very, very generous, as they should be. And so our duty is to answer. So our internal policy is that, you know, we, we track it, because I think that that's an important piece. It certainly, if it becomes such that, you know, it's, it's taking a lot of staff time, or we're seeing an increase or an uptick in what we have to pay in legal expenses, it's something that should be discussed during budget time. But other than that, you know, the, the policy that we have is, we do what the legislature tells us.
Well, I think that's great, and I think that that is exactly what I was, what I was hoping to hear. I think it would be helpful to do what some towns do, I think Pepperell and Clinton, Clinton, I believe, some other towns, list, and I think maybe under the town clerk or records officer's page, list what the FOIA was, they can list who, Mr. X or something, if it was an anonymous one, and what the work product was, so we don't get repetitive FOIAs. And also so people aren't so quick to weaponize them, which I think they've been doing, and taking up time of staff and the people who were the subject of them. So I'd like to.
How does listing them keep people from?
Because you list them, and then you list the work product, what the results are, and so people can see what they were.
So you just post publicly the results of every FOIA?
Yes, for example, Ryan Aldrich requested my emails about the recall, which were just meant to try to keep things less, you know, factual, and other people.
Hold on, we, remember how I said we don't ascribe motives to folks, so let's speak.
I said mine, my emails were kept, I am, this is purely factual. I'm not, I'm not ascribing for whatever reason we're wanted. But there was a lot of general interest, there was a lot of discussion about that, how they came about. I think it would be helpful to people to have those posted, and for people to understand, be able to read them and come to their own assessments, and not for anybody else to ascribe motive. So I think that that's something that we.
I would recommend then, if you have a proposal of how we would make this, it's going to make it more burdensome for town officials, we're already meeting the.
Less burdensome, I would argue.
But my guess is the ones who have to then post it all would make it, would argue that it's more burdensome. We meet master and a large requirements, which are pretty strict, and they should be, with how they allow. I mean, so I would suggest that if you have a, a policy or procedure change that you would want to recommend to the board that we adopt, then you could write something up and present it.
I could do that, I was going, I was going to turn and say, you know, since it's done in other communities, if there are anything that somebody prefers, but I, if you prefer I develop it, I was.
I, yeah, yeah. I don't want to speak for Mr. Allison, but I'm, I'm just as, I'm distraught about the number of FOIAs and all these, I would like everyone to just work together to lift our community up. But I don't know that, I feel like this might be a solution in search of a problem. But if you'd like to present a draft policy or procedure, I'm glad to, I'm sure the board would be glad to take a look at it.
I will do so.
Okay, awesome. Next item was review and discuss the July 18th open meeting law complaint filed by Russ Williston. I believe, hold on, I'm not really, that's not really my jam, to review and discuss that. My understanding is, he made a presentation. My understanding is, he made a presentation, sorry, and it was determined that the, I'm looking at it now to make sure I have it all set, that there, he made several claims around the board of registrars. Is that right?
Correct, and we answered and we're, we're waiting.
We, our response indicated that one, two, three of his concerns, that, that they did not warrant any sort of action. So now we're waiting for a response from him.
Waiting for a response from, from the AG or from, or from.
Correct, from the AG.
From that attorney general, okay. We have other open meeting, didn't we get another open meeting law complaint from Jean recently too? Does that apply still because the, it was against applying any board members?
That's, it does.
It still applies?
And I'm, I'm not sure, but I think that came in, well, I don't know when it came in.
It came in after the agenda was set.
Yeah, that's what I thought, yeah. That's what I was going to say, but I said.
Generally speaking, until the board has been able to review it and we have a response, I, I wouldn't necessarily, I wouldn't recommend discussing it.
Right, exactly. So, that being said, that, is that. And then the number nine, we've already discussed, is no longer relevant due to resignations. There is no recall pending. Appointments and resignations, member verification and appointments, as we discussed earlier in the meeting. Kate, at the last meeting, I think August first, we reviewed council on aging membership, and there was some confusion as to who sat on it. You went about clarifying that and verifying the membership, and you have a report to deliver that the sum and substance of is, there's four seats of the five filled under a new composition.
Correct, and Kathy Rocco did the, the legwork for this, so I thank you to her. But, so yes, so there's four of the five, and while there might be folks, she, she did attach meeting minutes that were most recently, that, you know, there was a number of people who attended the meetings that may or may not have been called.
Board members.
Who are board members, and there's a series of emails that go back to try to sort that out. But I think it would be better to just move forward rather than to.
And so.
Go through that.
So we have one position of the five vacant.
Correct.
Do we know, so we should obviously post for that.
Correct.
Do we know what we're posting for? Is it a full term? And if so, what is, what would the term be?
I believe it's two years.
If we, I mean, we could just.
And we'll, we'll post it with the, with the designation.
Great, thank you.
So Kate, that's, that's great, yeah. Looks like there's four on, one to be filled. When, is it not proper? When guests come, we just list that their guests are there. But I think a lot of other boards and commissions do too.
No, it's not that. It was up here in some of them, but I don't want, that's again going.
Well, it says members.
Okay.
So there's members and then others present.
Right, right.
So thank you for that.
Yep.
Member verification and for posting that opening. We encourage anybody out there who's interested in serving our council on aging to look for that posting and respond with all due haste. Uh, next item is something we discussed last time and now we're prepared to vote on, which is our MART area representative. Is there a motion, Mr. Allison, to appoint Alexandra Turner to a term to expire, although it's standby, term to expire, June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two, it says. So it already expired. Thank you for your service.
It was great.
Twenty twenty-three. Is there a motion to appoint Alexandra Turner to a term to expire, June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three?
Second.
I will second that since, you know, you're being appointed. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, indicate by saying aye, Mr. Allison.
Aye.
Mr. Carrigan, aye.
Aye, I guess.
You should abstain. So anybody abstaining? Anybody abstaining?
I will do that.
Okay, so it is two, zero, one. Congratulations. You are our MART regional.
We need to abstain from appointments, huh?
Yeah, you just did.
Okay.
This guy's still up there, so we're fine. All right, uh, next, these are licenses and permits. I believe, Madam Clerk, this is your show.
Okey dokey. So I would offer a motion to approve the application for town license, dancing, sports, games, fairs, expositions, plays, or entertainment, a public diversion on Sunday for Tyrods car show at the Lancaster Fairgrounds, September eleventh, from nine to six.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, Mr. Allison?
Aye.
Ms. Turner?
Aye. Question, I'm assuming that they're going to give us their insurance before the event.
That is, I, I don't want to be repetitive, but I believe you've asked that question of the chief prior to, and he's answered.
Yep.
Chief, is there a circumstance? If circumstance arises where that's a different condition, can you raise that? Thank you. Um, Mr. Carrigan, aye. Three, zero, zero, next.
I would offer a motion to approve the application for special one-day liquor license for Tyrods at the Lancaster Fairgrounds, September eleventh, from nine to six.
The applicant name.
I'm sorry, I thought I said Tyrods.
You just said event. You just said the applicant's name.
I'm sorry, I thought I said Lancaster Fairgrounds Tyrods. Tyrods at the Bolton Fair.
The, yeah, the applicant's name is Rose Darden of the management.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay.
Uh, if we, I think if you just read off the agenda, you just got all the relevant stuff. Is there a second? I'm assuming you're seconding. Okay, all those in favor, Mr. Allison?
Aye.
Ms. Turner?
Aye.
Mr. Carrigan, aye, three, zero. Number three.
I would offer a motion for the application for public entertainment on Sundays. The applicant is Peter Quick. The event, British Motorcycle Show and Swap, Sunday, September eighteenth, twenty twenty-two, from six AM to six PM, Lancaster Fairgrounds.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Allison?
Aye.
And Mr. Carrigan, aye. So three, zero, zero. I'd like your response. Number four.
I would offer a motion for the application for public entertainment, weekdays and Sundays, for Michelle Palmer and Rose Darden for the Proud Profound Market, September twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth, Saturday, eight thirty to five, Sunday, ten to five, at the Lancaster Fairgrounds.
Second.
All those in favor, Mr. Allison?
Aye.
Ms. Turner?
Aye.
Mr. Carrigan, aye. Whoever turned the air conditioning on, thank God. Thank you. I appreciate that. All right, hit it.
I think it's the last, the last one was an, I'd offer a motion for an application for special one-day liquor license application, all alcohol. The applicant is Rose Darden of the Bolton Fair for the Profound Market, from September twenty-fourth to twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-two, load in September twenty-third, twenty twenty-two, located at the Lancaster Fairgrounds, three eighteen, seven, Bridger.
Second.
All those in favor, Mr. Allison?
Aye.
Ms. Turner?
Aye.
Mr. Carrigan, aye, three, zero, zero. That concludes our licenses and permits. Uh, new business, do I?
Uh, well. Packages, but.
Oh, no, I did.
Can I offer just some new business to maybe discuss at a future meeting?
Um, indeed you may.
It's a way of, an update. We just had a quarterly meeting. I serve on the Restoration Advisory Board in the town. And it's a very good group, productive group. We met with the Army to talk about the superfund sites, what they call the circular process. And one of the things that they are focusing on and are most concerned about is water quality in wells, particularly PFAS, and the, the suggestion was made that we should work with our Board of Health, as Harvard is working with.
Who made the suggestion?
The board, the RAB board, was, Harvard Board of Health is actually on the Restoration Advisory Board and is working with the Army about testing private wells. There is money for that for Harvard. I don't think that there's money for that for Lancaster because while.
Because they're still active in Lancaster?
No, because Harvard has, the majority of their wells are private in Lancaster. We don't have as many wells. We have a public water system. However, everybody that's up in North Lancaster and offer our water system is, is eligible or should be. So there are some other programs that we need to look at.
Can we get them to come in, or someone to give us a presentation with some of the facts and what's available? That'd be great. That's awesome.
And the other thing is, I think that we all, well, some of us may have heard in the last legislative session, they did a lot in the eleventh hour, and the, and good news is for Lancaster is the MBTA numbers were great, requirements were greatly reduced. So maybe we want to talk about that too at some point because we're considered a small town.
Okay, if you want to add those to the agenda, then we gotta.
Yes.
Add some meat to the bones of those items, and we can certainly do that. Um, all right, um, do you have any new business, Mr. Allison?
I don't.
I'm not searching for new business. I'm just asking. I want to give you an option in case you got something you want to get off your chest. Uh, all right, I don't have any new business that I'm aware of. Okay, great. Uh, communications, town offices will be closed Monday. Wait, are you supposed to read this or my, well, whatever. Town offices will close for Labor Day, September fifth. Um, and this, as you just heard, we approved the warrant for the twenty twenty-two state primary, which will be held on Tuesday, September sixth, twenty twenty-two, at Town Hall, which is six ninety-five Main Street from seven AM to eight PM. And then the last communication is still from our dear friend who wants to talk about sidewalks. So we have to invite Mr. Frelick, young Master Frelick, to come and, and discuss sidewalks with us. Uh, and then ongoing projects, we have, I have to connect Jasmine and you with Dan Rivera at Mass Development, because he asked for me to email connect with the town administrator. So I'm going to do that. I think I told you I was going to do it the other day, but I'm actually going to do it today. So that will, that'll at least start the conversation with Mass Development. That can be additive to the ongoing D-CAM discussions here in town as well. Um, and then Audit Committee.
I think Alex was tasked with bringing a.
Oh, right.
Charge.
Yes, a charge.
And I did not do that, so I, um.
That's why, that's why they're called ongoing projects.
Twenty lashes, twenty lashes. I, I do owe you that.
Move that to ongoing, can keep it an ongoing project. That's fine. Seeing nothing more on the agenda and desiring to leave this building, I will entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
We should adjourn.
Second.
Uh, all those in favor, Mr. Allison?
Aye.
Ms. Turner?
Aye.
Mr. Carrigan, aye. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you all very much.